I'd like to call the Clear Lake City Council meeting to order. We are here at the Clear Lake City Hall located at 14050 Olympic Drive in Clear Lake, California. Today is Thursday, October 5th, 2017. It is 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, if you call or roll.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Here.
Mayor Perdah?
Mr. Jones, any announcements from closed session?
Mr. Mayor, there's no reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Folsom, any changes to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item number 15, which is the consideration of award of contract for professional engineering design services right ahead of the public hearing.
Under business or in the public hearing?
Before the public hearing. But it would be a business item before the public hearing.
All right. You can do that in the objection. Very good. Have a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, did put it on there and I forgot to do the pledge. If we can stop here and do our pledge, we'll move the agenda to the agenda. I am the deacon to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you all. All right, on the consent agenda, any changes to that? Open it up for public?
Okay.
Thank you. Open it up for public. Anybody wanting to hear the item on consent agenda, please step forward. Seeing that I'll bring it back for action.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Oh, sorry.
We moved item 15 to ahead of the public hearing.
You know, you're right on that. It was so long ago, I forgot. So for our first item, we will take the consideration of award of contract for professional engineering design services for the city of Clear Lake relating to the Country Club Drive pavement rehabilitation preliminary study report, Mr. Folsom.
This is going to be a Measure B fund project and in order to get this done, we first go through and do preliminary engineering design. This is to authorize me to execute a contract with Coastland Civil Engineers to do a preliminary study report for an amount not to exceed $27,000.
Very well. Any questions? I'd like to open it up for public. Anybody have a question on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for further discussion and action.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Coastland Civil Engineers to provide engineering design services relating to the Country Club Drive pavement rehabilitation preliminary study not to exceed $27,032.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, if you call or roll.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye.
Thank you. Now moving on to our public hearing. Item number two. I'd like to open the public hearing. Item number two is a public hearing to hear and act upon an abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at 4116 Sunset Avenue in Clear Lake. And this is in accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code Sections 18-9.11, 18-12, 9.12, 18-9.13, and 1B-18, oh my goodness, 18-10 in its entirety. Thank you.
Mr. Folsom? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce our code enforcement staff.
The purpose of this hearing is to consider and act upon any and all appeals of the proposed abatement order. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant the appeal and adopt the resolution to allow the cultivation of marijuana. Or deny the appeal and adopt the resolution of holding the abatement order of cultivation of marijuana and direct the owner to abate the public nuisance. All legal and required documentations were sent via U.S. standard mail and certified mail as well as posted at the property. The property owner and/or responsible persons filed an appeal in a timely manner. Attached to each staff report are the proposed resolutions confirming or denying said appeal. Staff recommends that council deny each said appeal. The first property is 4116 Sunset Avenue. The owner is Michael Mirzoyan and the appellant is Marshall Westerman. They had CMC marijuana violations on there and I was the siding officer.
Thank you, officer.
This is a picture on the day I found the violation of the marijuana.
Do you have a made even on the fence height?
I believe it is six feet.
Thank you.
Today the marijuana is still there. Today the marijuana is still there, but they've put up this black screening and you can see it. It is right around in this area. And that's all I have for this property.
Thank you very much. Any questions, staff, at this point? Seeing that I'll open it up. Is the property owner here or his representative, Mr. Westerman, in the audience? Would you like to speak on this matter and offer testimony?
I can't say anything because I don't have a permit.
Can you step up here to the mic if you can't say anything and introduce yourself?
My name is Mr. Westerman. You know, I really can't say anything because I don't have a permit. I didn't know we had it and we didn't have one. I did try to cover it so it wasn't seen. Really, I mean, there's nothing I can say.
Based on your knowledge that the violations exist?
Yeah.
Have you spoken to the code enforcement officer in trying to solve this?
No, I couldn't get a hold of them. I mean, I let messages within to call me and they didn't call back.
I don't have any further questions, but Councilmember Bennett does. How many plants are there?
You know what, just like 50 probably.
50?
Yeah. And they're not six feet tall. They're in pots, that's why they look so tall. The pots are probably on a table here, just about like that. So they're probably like four and a half, five feet tall.
Anything else you can offer up?
No, I mean...
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Westerman?
Are you aware of the permitted limit of growing?
You know what, I wouldn't.
The limit to grow outside once you've been permitted to do so is six plants.
I didn't know that.
I'm just glad that it's okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Westerman.
The recommended action is the motion to deny the appeal and adopt the resolution number 2017-65 and to read it by title only.
Thank you. Any other question or reaction?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-65, denying the appeal and to read it by title only. Appeal referencing real property located at 4116 Sunset Avenue, Clear Lake, California, 95422 in accordance with CMC Sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, 18-9.130, and 18-10 in its entirety.
Have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, if you call or roll.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Westerman, just so you know, for a matter of record, you don't need to respond to me on this. If that is abated within a time, a few days timeframe, you can contact our city manager. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Disregard what I said. Moving on to item two.
The property address is 3900 Vista Rose Way. The owner is Ted and Judy Barcelon. The appellant was Christian Cuevas. They had marijuana with no permit and I was the siding officer. Well, you can see the marijuana over the fence.
And any marijuana over the fence, your estimate?
Six feet. They have pulled the marijuana out of this afternoon. And the recommended action is the motion to deny the appeal and adopt resolution number 2017-66 and to read it by title only.
Any questions, staff? Is the appellant in the audience or a witness on this property? Please step forward. Thank you very much. Seeing that I'll bring it back.
I'd like to make a motion, code adopt resolution number 2017-66, denying the appeal and appeal referencing real property located at 3900 Vista Rose Way, Clear Lake, California, 95422 in accordance with CMC Sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, 18-9.130, and 18-10 in its entirety.
Second? Have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye.
Very well, moving on to agenda item four. Hear and act upon an abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at 15595 31st Avenue, Clear Lake. Who's the assisting officer, Mr. Lambert? Wrong.
Hey, the address on this one is 15595 31st Avenue. The owner is William and Florence Warren. The appellant is Jose Lopez. Two violations and I was the siding officer. So there's a picture of the marijuana on September 6th, 2017. And this was pictured today. This is from a different angle. This is the back of the house. The recommended action is to motion to deny the appeal and adopt resolution number 2017-67 and read it by title only.
Thank you, officer. Any questions, staff? Seeing that, open it up for public. Is there a witness who would like to speak on this particular property and offer testimony? Very well, seeing that I'll bring him back for action.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal and approve resolution number 2017-67, upholding the abatement order for cultivation of marijuana at 15595 31st Avenue.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Aye, Councilmember Overton. Madam Clerk, would you call or roll?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye.
Moving on to agenda item number five. Hear and act upon an abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at 3843 Emil or Emily Avenue in Clear Lake.
Hey, so the owner was Pedro Flores Quintaro and the appellant is the same. And there was numerous violations and I was the siding officer. This was the picture on August 30th, 2017. And this was a picture today, a different angle. The marijuana was still there. And recommended action is motion to deny the appeal and adopt resolution number 2017-68 and read it by title only.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? Seeing that, I'll open it up for testimony. Is there a person representing the appellant or the appellant here tonight?
Right, it's my father brought me to translate for me.
Very well, would you like to come to the microphone and speak? If you could just introduce yourself, sir?
My name is Pedro Flores. He had to translate for my father, Pedro Flores Quintaro.
Thank you. Do you live on the property?
Yes.
Would you like him to join you at the mic?
No, it's fine.
So you're just going to offer testimony for him? You're not really translating?
Oh, well, I just got to know when you translated.
Just want to make sure where you're at. Is the, are the pictures accurate?
Yeah.
That's the property. Can you recognize that as the property we're discussing?
Yeah.
Okay, are you, had you applied for an application? Have you tried to?
Application for the grow. For the grow? No.
Okay. How many plants are in the yard?
I'm not exactly sure, but we did take some off on the first one, so I think right now we're down seven.
Seven?
Right now we're just over.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing that I'll bring it back to council for action.
Make a motion to deny the appeal and approve resolution number 2017-68, upholding the abatement order for cultivation of marijuana at 3843 Emil Avenue and direct the owner to abate the public nuisance.
Second? Have a motion in a second by Councilmember Overton. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye.
And moving on to item six, public hearing to hear and act upon an abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at 15961 21st Avenue, Clear Lake. Officer Felder?
Hey, the address is 15961 21st Avenue. The owner is Hady and Marie Mayer. The appellant is Victor D. Neseo. There was a couple violations and I was the siding officer. This was picture taken on September 5th, 2017. And this was pictured today.
Thank you, officer.
Question, made in action is motion to deny the appeal and adopt resolution number 2017-69 and read it by title only.
Thank you, officer. Any questions? Councilmember Overton?
Yeah, okay, can you back to the picture? So is this property on this side part of that property or is this?
No, this is, this is the west side of the property. This is the backyard. This house is totally, yeah, this house is totally separate.
Okay. We'll be citing that too.
Let me see that later. Commissioner?
Yeah, I was curious, can you go back to the violations? Just you skipped over and there seemed to be more than the others on this one.
Oh, gotcha. Missed that bag.
I think I know one that was right on the, right on the clock.
Thank you, officer. Any other questions?
Just want to clarify, they did not have a permit to start with. No, they did not.
Yes, mayor?
Yeah, 21st Avenue seems to be a hotspot. Is that in the same basic area that we've been seeing the others that you brought to us?
No, it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Very well, seeing that I'll open it up. Is there a representative for this property here? Please step up. If you could introduce yourself?
My name is Victor.
Okay, and do you live at this property?
Yeah.
Were the pictures and the information, is that accurate?
Yeah, but there's two places right there. The one right over there, that's the place where the plants are.
Okay, let me clarify because I'm not understanding you. Are the plants not on the property where you live?
Yeah.
There are, there are not?
Yeah, they're right there.
Okay.
But I have like seven.
You have seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a permit?
No permit, no.
All right, any other questions? No more questions?
No.
Do you have anything else you'd like to offer?
No. They just told me that I don't get to pay like 500 bucks for the permits or something. I don't know what.
Who's they? Who told you that?
Nathan and me that I can't pay because I don't have a permit.
Okay.
Well, that's why.
Mr. Felder?
It's a $500 fine for cultivating without a permit.
Right, but what's the penalty for cultivating without a permit?
Five hundred dollars.
And no grow for how long?
For the next season, for one year.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
I just want to make sure they have five days to abate, correct?
Yes. And if they don't, then it's $1,000 per plant.
Per day?
Per day.
So after this day, there's five more days? So like they can like cut it down or something or what?
It will be five days from the day we post the results, which will be Monday.
Next Monday?
It'll be five days from this coming Monday.
Oh, from this coming Monday, okay.
But then to reiterate, then if they're not cut down, then it goes to $1,000 per plant?
Yeah, I know that. And you cannot cultivate next year? Okay.
So, well, and the other violations, I mean, there's one that is to grow, is that correct, officer?
Yes, the fence. The fence.
Everything, everything needs to be corrected.
Oh, the fence? It's six feet?
No, it's actually not. And I've been in touch with the property owner. I did cite him on that. She came in for a permit, but hasn't came back to finalize it yet.
Yeah, but I did pay the permit. She did pay a permit.
Anyway, it needs to be all taken care of, okay?
Okay.
And Officer Felder, is your contact once that's done?
I'll take my card.
Any other questions?
Just want to make sure that you call in and that everybody that's been here realizes that they need to call in and make sure that they talk to the code enforcement when they have it done so that they don't charge you more.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter, please step forward. Seeing that I'll bring it back.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-69, upholding the abatement order for cultivation of marijuana at 15961 21st Avenue and direct the owner to abate the public
Have a motion in a second by the vice mayor. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye.
Moving on to agenda item seven, to hear and act upon an abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at 4075 Eureka Avenue in Clear Lake. Officer Felder?
Hey, the owner was, is Jack Damron. The appellant is Patrick Ritchie. I was the siding officer. So on this one, I was with Officer, Detective Barnes. He was there for something else. I went with him and I was able to take these pictures in the backyard. And I was not able to get the pictures today. Recommended, recommended action, motion to deny the appeal and adopt resolution number 2017-70 and read it by title only.
Thank you, officer. Any questions? Is there a subject in the audience wanting to testify on this? Please step forward or introduce yourself.
I'm Patrick Ritchie.
All right, do you live on the property, sir? There's a residence on the property?
Yes. Um, there's, there's actually a residence and a lot next to it that we're combining.
Okay.
Just add, just like you said, this is, this, this one right here is the vacant parcel, we call it, but the residence is right next door. So both these next cases are together.
I see. Thank you. Was it represented correctly in your opinion?
Yes.
Okay, so that is your property, right. About how many plants?
Combined, probably 12.
Okay.
Maybe 13.
And there isn't a permit?
There's no permit.
All right. Any other questions?
And you do realize now that you have to have a permit?
I do. I went down and I had tenants there and I guess they left with the fence and then I got a citation for not having a fence or got a fence permit. I wasn't aware that I needed a permit to grow. I thought medical marijuana, I could grow and Prop 64 passed for recreational marijuana.
Maybe you might want to check that because I believe it's indoors. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
These two are combined, so this one here is referencing the property with the home. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Felder?
Let me check my...
The reason I bring that up is because...
No, this one is the vacant lot.
So that...
4075 is the vacant lot?
Correct.
And then the next case is 4055?
Just another thing to be aware of, that growing on a vacant lot is not permissible.
No. I believe that the properties are merged together.
If they're merged, then it's not. The vacant lot, it's part of the same property, but if they're not merged and it is a separate lot, it's not permissible to grow on that lot.
And I believe the officer got that information.
Yeah, at the time of the violations, they weren't merged.
Okay, so we're getting some questions answered. Thank you, sir. We'll call you up here in just a minute.
Okay.
The next one.
All right.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter, please step forward. Seeing that I'll bring you back to council.
Fair, I'd like to make sure, approve resolution number 2017-70, resolution approved by the city of Clear Lake, denying the appeal of the abatement order at real property located at 4075 Eureka Avenue in accordance with Sections 18-9.110, 120, 130, and 18-10 in its entirety.
Thank you, and I'm a second by Councilmember Bennett. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye. Thank you.
Next, we have to hear and act upon an abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at 3051 Sixth Street in Clear Lake, California, 95422.
Excuse me, sir, we're actually not done. We got 4055.
I apologize. I looked right at it. Go ahead.
Okay, so the address is 4055 Eureka Avenue. The owner is Jack Damron and the appellant is Patrick Ritchie. I was the siding officer. This is the, the house. Oh, that was today, I'm sorry. That was today's picture. Okay, so recommended action, motion to deny the appeal and adopt resolution number 2017-71 and read it by title only.
Thank you, officer. Apologize for your... Any questions? Anyone wishing to offer testimony? Please step forward. We'll do this again.
I believe it's the same, the same thing. I just have a question. There is a $500 fine and no grow for next year. There was an appeal process for that as well, I believe?
No, the appeal process is for the $1,000 per plant. There is no appealing to $500 fine.
I believe I got something in the mail and I mailed it in.
Yeah, that's the appeal. It's there past the deadline and it's $1,000 per plant per day. That's what you can appeal. That's the administrative citation. The other billing was just the, for growing without a permit. That's automatic $500 fine. There's no appeal to that.
I believe I got two separate, uh, I got, um, an appeal for the grow.
So what you received, you received an abatement order?
Right.
Okay, it was an appeal form. You received an imposition of administrative penalties within the appeal form. Uh, the imposition of administrative penalties is in reference to, if you don't abate the plants within the five days, the thousand dollar fine becomes due. Um, there is no, essentially, you're appealing the five hundred dollar fine right now. If you were to be granted your appeal, in essence, there'd be no violation on your property, and you wouldn't owe a five hundred dollar fine. If it's denied, then you are growing illegally, and there's a five hundred dollar fine. And all penalties are assessed. So next year, there's no chance of getting a permit. I'm restricted from growing on that property. Correct, for one, one season, yes.
That's correct. Mr. Felder?
Now, this is a separate property, let's say it as it merged, how many plants on this piece of property?
Together?
Yeah.
'Cause the backyards are adjoint to the property? It's probably twelve, thirteen.
Thirteen, and this is all medical marijuana?
Yes.
For one person? Okay.
Any other questions?
Any two people, me and my wife, my wife and the party as well.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? No, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this property, please step forward. See if I can bring it back. Mr. Bennett?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty seventeen dash seventy-one, denying the, uh, the appeal, uh, located, about to grow, located at four zero five five Eureka Avenue, in accordance with CMC Sections eighteen dash nine point one one zero, eighteen dash nine point one two zero, eighteen dash nine point one three zero, and eighteen dash ten, and it's entire.
Second? I have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Pardon?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to item nine. Hear an act upon abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at three zero five one Sixth Street. Mr. Lambert, is this yours?
This is mine. Uh, the property is located at thirty fifty one Sixth Street. Property owner is Joseph Dingus. The appellant is the same Joseph Dingus. Now, there's several violations regarding the cultivation of marijuana, including failure to obtain a permit, not meeting the set by requirements, lack of enclosed surrounding cultivation site, and illegal outdoor cultivation of marijuana plants that can be seen from the public right way. I was the siding officer. This is a picture taken on July twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. You can see the plants there. And this is a picture taken today. Recommended actions, the motion to deny the appeal and adopt Resolution Number two thousand seventeen dash seventy-two, and read by title only.
Thank you, Officer. Is Mr. Dingus or someone representing this property in, in the audience? Would you like to testify at this time? Let's see, Mr. Dingus, is anyone wanting to comment on this? This is your chance. See if I can bring it back.
I'd like to make a motion to approve our Resolution Number two zero one seven dash seven two, denying the appeal, and approving Resolution, upholding the abatement order for cultivation of marijuana at three zero five one Sixth Street, and direct the owner to abate the public nuisance.
Second?
I have a motion and a second by Vice Mayor, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Pardon?
Aye.
Moving on to item ten. Hear an act upon abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at three zero seven one Sixth Street, Clearland, California. Mr. Lambert?
Okay, so I was the siding officer on this one. Uh, multiple violations for failing to obtain a cultivation permit, illegal outdoor cultivation of marijuana larger than a hundred square feet, uh, illegal outdoor cultivation of marijuana within a hoop house, greenhouse, and lack of an enclosed surrounding cultivation site within a single square fence. It was also being conducted on land without a private residence. And there was more than six plants. Uh, this is a picture taken on August twenty-ninth. You can see the large hoop house above the fence. This was a picture taken today. The plants are all gone. Um, on this case, the appeal form was submitted fraudulently. A male subject came in, identifying himself as the property owner, asked and inquiring about how to file an appeal on the property, and then left. A few days later, received the appeal in the mail, um, signed by the property owner. A few days after that, the property owner came in, and was a different gentleman, and submitted paperwork, which you have in your binder there, stating that he did not appeal the abatement order, and did not wish to have the appeal heard.
Were you able to identify the subject who initiated the fraudulent act?
We, I couldn't, I, I, all I can say is it wasn't the property owner. The property owner was identified.
All right.
Um, he did submit a copy of his photo ID, which I believe is also in there as well.
Very well, any questions? You have some?
The recommended action is to pull agenda number ten.
Any questions still?
There's nothing.
There's nothing in your appeal, something?
Court agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a, a comment about this for the, for the council. Um, this happens on more than a couple of occasions. And one of the changes we're going to make on the process, um, our appeal forms do not have a provision that they're signed under penalty of perjury. We're going to put that in. Uh, we ran into this, I ran into this issue down in Contra Posticali, and the DA declined to prosecute these because there wasn't a, uh, signed under penalty of perjury. So we're going to add that to our...
Thank you.
Applications. Also, in these cases, when, when we can't identify who is turning it in, I mean, we, we will reject it and return it, 'cause we don't want to keep the money, accept the money and not reject the appeal. I mean, that's not appropriate. Uh, but in this particular case, it was mailed in, and it was a money order. Um, and the money order stated on it that it was from the, uh, the property owner. So, uh, we didn't have any particular issue in terms of returning the money order to the purported person who made it out, the property owner, and I believe that he's going to apply that toward his fine. Not a real great result, but there does seem to be, uh, an issue in, uh, with some of these people who are growing on properties that are not their own, um, that they feel that they have to sign the property owner's name to acquire, um, when that's not actually required. But it happens, and, and we're dealing with it. I just want to let you know that, uh, that there are appeals that don't get here because of that very issue.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any questions? Anyone who would both want to comment on this? See if I can bring you back, thank you, Officer. All right, we're pulling that one, moving on to item twelve. Eleven, I'm on that. Thank you for keeping on track, I'll lose track. There's so many. To hear an act upon abatement order, appeal hearing referencing real property located at three three four seven Seventh Street, Clearland, California. Officer?
The property is thirty-three forty-seven Seventh Street. The owner is Presilliano Vargas. The appellant is the same. Uh, numerous violations, including failing to obtain, obtain a cultivation permit, illegal outdoor cultivation of marijuana in an area larger than a hundred square feet, lack of an enclosed surrounding cultivation site, illegal cultivation of marijuana that's being conducted on a vacant parcel of land, and illegal cultivation of more than six living plants. I was the siding officer. Here's the property on July twenty-fifth. Um, there's smaller plants. And here is the photo today. You can see the top of the plants above the fence line, that is a six-foot fence.
Is it a permitted fence?
Uh, the fence is actually illegal, it's, it's set back twenty feet from the roadway. Uh, the recommended action is a motion to deny the appeal and adopt Resolution Number two thousand seventeen dash seventy-four, and read by title only.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer, any questions? I'd like to open it up as the appellant here, or someone representing him. Please step forward, gentlemen. Please. If you could introduce yourself, and he can introduce himself. Come on up.
Okay.
And who are you, sir?
Um, I'm Mr. Jose.
Jose? Do you live on the property?
Yeah.
You're a proud and an aunt friend to him. And, and your name, sir?
Presilliano.
Thank you.
Presilliano, that's the owner of the property.
Thank you.
Yeah, so right here, he's at a, um, he's got a contract. He's renting to somebody. Somebody else.
He's renting to somebody else?
Renting the property. So he's got a contract here.
The rental agreement?
Yes. Yeah, so the guy that I'm renting, uh, he's not here. He's working in Fresno. So he's, so he's coming next week. And he's got a letter, but...
Does this gentleman own the property? Does he know, it, it acknowledges he owns the property?
Yes. Yeah, so he's called the guy, he's coming next week. So next week, he's going to, he's going to pull it, because he's not, he's luck, I mean, he's not, he's not a kid, but luck. And... Yeah, he made a week for his comment, and, and opened the door, opened the gate, and put it out the door.
Very well. Does the property look, as the officer represented it, do you agree with this? What the evidence shows? That is the property?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
So, so, 'cause his property, but he's renting it to somebody, and it's the renter that's growing?
Uh, he's renting, uh, he's renting for the guy who takes him to the cars or something.
So...
I don't know if he's, I don't know if that one, but he's received a letter for that.
Well, he needs to understand that he only has five days, so by Friday next week, they all have to be taken care of. It's his property.
Okay.
So, so, you know, otherwise, he's gonna turn around and be fined more, a hundred, a thousand dollars per plant. So he needs to understand they have to be removed.
Okay, so by the end of the year, he has to have the mobiles for them. Uh, his Friday is coming?
Yes, five days from Monday.
Five days from Monday. Anything else?
Officer Bennett?
Did, this gentleman lives in Fresno?
No, the, the renting guy.
Oh, the tenant. Where does the tenant live?
He's, uh, I'm sorry?
Where does he live?
Uh, he lives here.
He lives here?
Yes.
So he knew the plants were there?
And now he's got a letter, he's not. But, yeah, he's not, because he's renting the property for something else, not for that.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest, if he rents the property out again, put in his rental agreement, no marijuana growth.
Uh, Officer Lambert has a question.
I'd like to run counsel that this lot is actually a vacant lot. There is no residence on the property.
Oh, I thought there was a house.
And, and I also wanted to clarify something. It's five days from the day it's posted, which will be no later than Monday.
Monday.
So it could be tomorrow.
So yes, until Friday. But he would be smart to tell him it's weekend.
Till Friday, till Friday.
Yeah, yeah, till Friday, but...
Okay.
Well, hold on, it's five days from it's posted.
Five days from it's posted.
So it's posted tomorrow.
It could be Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
First thing in the week.
Yeah, suggest to have him out by Wednesday.
Check, check on your renter. Check on your renter.
I, I have one other question. Do you live in the city limits of Clearland?
Yes, I live in the city.
Your address? Do you have the address, Officer Lambert?
I was resting a little bit.
Not on, it would be in your, in your folder.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Oh, Vice Mayor?
I just wanna suggest with what you're mentioning are your other reasons for renting to place cars on there. I would talk to code enforcement, because I don't think that that's, uh, a, a legal activity on a vacant lot as well. So I would check in with the code enforcement for whatever future purpose you wanna see that property used for.
Okay. Okay.
That's it, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Very well, this time I'd like to, well, action? Wait, this time, I would like to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to close?
Motion to close?
One? Two? I apologize. Again.
We'll track that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal and approve Resolution Number twenty seventeen dash seventy-four, upholding the abatement order for cultivation of marijuana at three three five five Seventh Street, and direct the owner to abate the public nuisance.
Second? I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Overton. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Pardon?
Aye.
Now moving on to the last item on our public hearing. Public hearing to hear an act upon abatement order, appeal hearing referencing a real property located at three three five five Seventh Street. Officer Lambert?
Again, this is three three five five Seventh Street. The owner is Presilliano Vargas, same as the appellant. Uh, same violations as the last property, uh, we just heard, and by the same property owner. Uh, no permit, uh, growing in an area larger than a hundred square feet, uh, no closure around the grow, illegal grow on a property without a dwelling structure, and more than six plants.
Thank you, Officer.
The original photo. And that was the photo taken today.
Vice Mayor?
Motion to deny the appeal and adopt Resolution Number two thousand seventeen dash seventy-five, and read by title only. I'd also like to add that these properties are two separate properties fenced in totally together. That's what I'm gonna ask.
Thank you. Questions? Is there a representative for this property?
I've had a representative.
Do you have, would you like to offer testimony on this property?
No, I just had a question.
Step forward, please. If you just introduce yourself.
Uh, my name is Polly, and I guess what I, I just wanna know is that if somebody is a property owner, and they don't know that there are things growing, are they the ones that are responsible for the five hundred dollars? Even though they didn't know? And what is the original permit to grow? If somebody was gonna do it legally, what would it cost to go down to City Hall and get a permit to grow marijuana on your property?
Officer Lambert?
This year, the permit fee was two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Polly, just to reiterate, on vacant piece of land, there wouldn't be a permit issued.
Okay, so, um, if a property owner didn't know that this was happening on their property, I mean, suppose you just owned a, a parcel, and people were growing?
It's one of the problems we would have had, um, fairly consistently, and we need to have property owners that do take responsibility and know what's happening on the property.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, we weed whack in May, before, you know, the morning thing. And then that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselman, Cindy Clearland, uh, just a, a point, uh, the property owner gets notification that this is going on. It isn't that they don't know what's going on.
Correct.
They're aware.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that it didn't sound like, that it was understood that that is.
Thank you, sir. Any other testimony, or, uh, want anyone wanting to speak on this item, please step forward. Seeing that I'll close public hearing.
Salute.
I have a motion. And a second to close public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously? Carries unanimously. What is the action on this?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2017-75, upholding the abatement order for cultivation of marijuana at 3355 Seventh Street, and direct the owner to abate the public nuisance.
Have a motion and second by Councilmember Overton. And clerk?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdott?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment on these abatements. Throughout our city, people complain throughout the growing city, throughout the growing season, on a daily basis, about the smell, about the trafficking that's going on in our city, about the violence that's going on. It's not even reported to the police department. There are home invasions, there are assaults. The last year that I worked before I retired, we had six homicides connected with this victimless crime of marijuana cultivation. You know, I live up in the avenues. I'm blessed this year that I don't have a grow on my block, but I had in previous years, and that scum smell waits into my house, into my yard, disturbing my young daughter, my wife, and myself. It needs to stop. So these grows that people don't know anything about needs to stop. And I don't have any sympathy for them. They know about it. It's a landlord's responsibility to know what's going on on their property. It's an individual's responsibility to know what the laws and the ordinances are. It has been low-publicized in the media and on television, local television, what the laws are. And that's my two bits with it. It just irritates the heck out of me when somebody comes up here saying, "I didn't know."
Thank you, sir.
Enough of it.
Moving on to agenda item 13, receipt in response to 2016, 2017 grand jury report. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So every year, the grand jury picks several things to take a look at. We're a small county with only two cities, so typically, they're looking at something with us, and something with Lakeport, something with the county. This year, there was very minimal that they actually looked at with the city. They looked at the city's road conditions. They looked at, we were mentioned with regard to tax lien sales, and with regard to animal control, but it was primarily the county they were looking at for that. The only area that we were required to respond to is with regard to the road conditions. The Lake County Civil Grand Jury had two recommendations. One, that we prioritize roadway rehabilitation in terms of existing problems, and two, that we coordinate with the county of Lake to participate in a tax lien, property tax sale, the purpose of which was to apparently raise revenues the city could use to spend on roads. So there's a draft response letter essentially saying, "We agree with the recommendations." And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Any comments or questions, again?
I was just curious, did they just not look at very much at this time, or because, I mean, like, this is the shortest grand jury thing I've ever seen, and the reality is, is I think we're actually doing both of these. So, to me, it's true.
Slap the horn, it says.
So, yeah. So good for us.
Thank you. Any comments? I do open the center of public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter or the grand jury report? Welcome to do so now. Seeing that I'll bring it back for action.
Do you need a motion or just an agreement to respond?
Just a motion to authorize me to send this letter.
I'd like to make a motion to...
I'm making a motion to authorize the city manager to submit this letter to the grand jury and reply to the report.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 14. Request for approval of resolution for criminal history checks of commercial marijuana dispensaries, resolution number 2017-76. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Selly, our acting chief.
Yes, honorable mayor and honorable councilmembers. This is on your agenda tonight because the FBI requires us to have a resolution with certain language that allows us to provide the criminal history information for licensing. Every applicant for a marijuana dispensary is required to do a criminal history check, and our resolution that went, that you guys approved, did not contain the required language. So basically, this is correcting that problem, which will allow us to access the information and provide it for the licensing purpose.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
For the upcoming ordinance that will come to the council in the near future for the commercial cultivation of marijuana, we'll need to do something similar for the background checks needed for those licenses.
That will actually be in the ordinance. Because this one's specifically for the dispensaries, correct? This is to make up for the fact that it wasn't in the previous ordinance, so we're getting it now so we can get those background checks finished. But the new ones that are coming to you in a couple of weeks, that will also be, will be affected by this as well. Not by this, it'll have its own thing. Gotcha, okay, that's what I was checking. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing that I'll open the side vote for public comment. Anyone wishing to address counsel on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing that I'll bring it back.
I'd like to approve, make a motion to approve resolution for disclosure of criminal history information for licensing of commercial marijuana dispensaries.
Second.
Ordinance, sorry, ordinance number 196-2017, no, never mind, I raised that. Resolution number 2017-76.
Second again. Have a motion and second by Councilmember Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 15.
Are you ready to get it?
Wait, are you ready? We are adjourned. And the time is 6:56 for this.